Mr. Godfrey, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Sorry, well, everybody join me in prayer if you will. Father God, I thank you for the privilege of being here tonight, dear Lord. I pray, Father, in this new year that, Lord, we can come a long way and go a long way, dear Lord, in this board and with everybody in this room, working together, dear Lord. And, Father, that we will put past political ambitions away and not think about them, Lord, but to think about what the people of Harney County have elected us to do. And that's to make the Harney County schools the best schools in the state of North Carolina. I pray that we will work together, dear Lord, and we will do the things that need to be done. And I pray blessings upon everybody here tonight, keep us safe, Lord, and watch after us for these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Hager, would you lead us into Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. Are there any adjustments to or amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have several amendments to the agenda tonight. If we can amend item two and item three, if we can flip those to make special presentations number two and close session for student appeal number three.
Okay.
Action item 13G, contract with Stewart and Duke, PLLSC Attorney Services. And 13H, letter to the legislature from the Harney County Board of Education concerning teacher pay.
Those would both be under action item?
Action items.
G and H.
13G and 13H.
Thank you. Are there other amendments? Okay. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gane aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So we will now move into special presentations. And we'll start with National Board recognition, and that would be Ms. Thompson.
This is a form of order.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Godfrey, was your motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey.
We're good. Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Good evening, Board members and Chairman Powell. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize and highlight a significant achievement in the field of education, our educators, and they've earned the prestigious honor of National Board Certification. As we gather to celebrate these accomplishments, it is important to reflect on the process and the value of this certification, as well as its impact on the teaching community and the students we serve. The National Board Certification is a mark of excellence in teaching. The certification is a prestigious, rigorous, comprehensive process requiring teachers to demonstrate their proficiency in content knowledge, pedagogy skills, and their ability to engage with students in a way that fosters learning and growth. The process includes submission of an extensive teaching portfolio, assessment, and in-depth analysis of their teaching practices, all reviewed by experts in their respective fields. For educators who are committed to continuous improvement and professional development, achieving this certification represents a pinnacle of their career. It requires dedication, reflection, unwavering commitment to their students and craft. The journey to National Board Certification is not easy, but it's one that results in a profound impact. Tonight, we're here to celebrate those who have successfully completed this process. These teachers have gone above and beyond demonstrating their expertise and their passion for making a difference in the lives of their students. Their achievement reflects not only their personal dedication, but to the quality of the teaching profession as a whole. Tonight, we're proud to recognize 11 educators from our district who have earned this distinction. I would like to take a moment to personally thank each of the recipients for your hard work, your perseverance, and your commitment to shaping the future of students. Your efforts are truly deserving of this recognition, and we're proud to have you to teach here in Harney County. I also want to take a moment to recognize the family members of these teachers. If you'll raise your hand, we're going to recognize the teachers in a minute, but family members, raise your hand, please. Smile, do something. Let's give them a round of applause. We know that that's critical when your spouse or family member goes through this process, so we appreciate your support. And finally, I want to recognize the principals who are here tonight to support these teachers. Principals, stand, raise your hand, don't hide in the crowd. Thank you, as well for your commitment to this process, your encouragement as they work through this. At this time, I want to invite Ms. Alicia Washington, who is so proudly displaying her National Board t-shirt, recruitment and retention coordinator for the district, as well as National Board liaison for our district, to recognize our newest National Board Certification recipients and review the qualifications for this honor. Ms. Alston from Human Resources will assist her, and Mr. Matthews will help in the presentation of the plaque.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. As Ms. Thompson stated, this is an advanced teaching credential that goes beyond state licensure. And our district is committed to supporting our educators in achieving their professional goals, particularly through the National Board Certification process. So in order to qualify for National Board Certification, candidates must have three years of successful teaching, a bachelor's degree, and a valid state teaching license. So our district cohort meets twice a month to focus on key aspects of the certification process, including analyzing the standards, unpacking the components, and mastering the art of reflection. We provide opportunities for candidates to share best practices, ask questions, and receive constructive feedback on written components. I'd just like to say, I have had, I've worked with most of the candidates this evening that is receiving National Board Certification, and they have worked extensively, like late hours, even sometimes over the weekend, you know, we're having phone conversations, making sure that, you know, they're meeting the portfolio requirements. And I just want to say, I'm so proud of you guys. I'm so glad you did not give up, that you hung in there, and you see you are a National Board Certified Teacher. So when I call your name, please come forward to receive your plaque and letter. And we receive a picture as well. All right. Our first name is Melinda Everado from Irwin Elementary School. Alexander Lawrence from Coates Elementary School. Morgan Lucre from Western Harney Middle School. Haley Nash, Littleton, Showtown. Stephanie Russell from Western Harney High School. Catherine Trumbull from Coates Elementary School. Courtney Whitehall from Overheals Elementary School. And Joanna Williamson from Coates Irwin Middle School. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations to all of our recipients, also to the principals and to the families. We know this is a tremendous amount of hard work it takes to earn this honor. This is a great achievement, so thank you very much for your hard work and what you're doing on behalf of our students here in Harney County Schools. Thank you. All right, moving along to our second presentation, a special presentation, rather, and that's the NCCAT Boroughs Welcome Fund, Beginning Teacher of the Year, and that is to Mr. Scott Denton. So once again, Ms. Thompson?
We welcome tonight Dr. Karen Summner. She is the Deputy Executive Director of Norcana Advancement of Teaching to recognize one of our exceptional educators, Mr. Scott Denton, a dedicated and passionate member of our teaching community. He's been named, like you said, one of the finalists for the Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. Dr. Summner, if you'd come forward and introduce your colleagues as well, I know you have some folks with you tonight.
Thank you. So helping me present this award to Mr. Denton is John Kirkman, the Executive Director of the North Carolina Association of Career and Technical Education, and Rick Stout, who is a member of our Board of Trustees at NCAT. So I appreciate them helping, and would Scott Denton please come forward at this time? On behalf of the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, it is my privilege to announce that Scott Denton, excuse me, has been selected as a finalist for the NCAT 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. This recognition highlights Mr. Denton's exceptional contributions to the teaching profession and his remarkable impact on the students and community here in Harney County. The Beginning Teacher of the Year Award was established to celebrate the creativity, resilience, and dedication of first-year teachers across North Carolina. Each year, more than 7,000 new educators enter classrooms in the state, and this award honors those who exemplify the best of the profession while addressing the unique challenges of beginning teachers. At NCAT, we are committed to advancing teaching as an art and a profession, and we are thrilled to celebrate Mr. Denton as a shining example of this mission. Please join me in congratulating Scott Denton on this outstanding achievement. We are pleased to provide you with a certificate recognizing you as an NCAT 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund Beginning Teacher of the Year finalist. We also, this is a fake one, you'll get the real one soon, we would also like to present you with a check for $250 from Empower. And if I can get you guys to join Mr. Denton in a picture.
Now, this is, I'm looking for the final check.
Yes. You're going to get the real one. I promise. Let me do one picture with the three of you with the certificate, and then...
The win check.
All right, may I trade in?
Do that one? Thank you.
I'll leave you turn.
Don't tell my business officer.
Congratulations. And Mr. Denton will be joining us for a week of professional development in Greensboro, March 24th through 28th, and then we'll do next steps, and we hope that as many of you as possible can attend our Beginning Teacher of the Year recognition event on March 27th at University of North Carolina at Greensboro's campus. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I will add that Mr. Denton is on our billboard here at the bridge, if you get to see him. There's a large picture of him registered for this honor. Again, congratulations, Mr. Denton.
Thank you very much, and once again, congratulations, Mr. Denton. Well deserved and a great honor. Congratulations. Moving along now to our 2023-24 Financial Compliance Audit. Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Coming up to present the Financial Compliance Audit Report for 2023-24 is Josh Peryear, Assurance Director with Forbes, who is the company who does our audit report. He kind of leads that team in the compliance and audit report for us. So I'll turn it over to you, Josh.
I'm always shocked at people that see audit report coming up on the agenda, and they don't want to hang around and hear us talk about it. Pretty usual. As they're getting our slide deck pulled up on the images, I'll just echo Andrew's sentiment. My name is Josh Peryear. I'm the Assurance Director with Forbes, as ours. Again, we're the CPA firm that conducts the financial statement and compliance audit, and we're here to present the results of those audits as of June 30th, 2024. We're presenting financials today that have been approved by the State Treasurer's Office and accepted by the Federal Audit Clearing House. The ACFA has also been submitted to the GFOA and the ASBO for financial reporting awards. Before we get into the material, I do just want to quickly recognize Andrew and his team for all the work on the audit, but more so for their service to the district. Their team is wonderful to work with. They make our lives a lot easier than other districts, and quite frankly, the district's lucky to have Andrew, so I want to mention him and appreciate him there. If we could move on down to the second slide, which is the agenda. So here's just a quick overview of the agenda that we'll cover, but we'll first start with a discussion of the audit results. You can flip to the next slide, please. One more. There we go. So the purpose of a financial statement audit and substantially all the work that goes into that is to enable us as auditors to issue an opinion on the financial statements. So here, we've included an excerpt of our audit opinion. This is considered an unmodified or effectively a clean opinion. This is the opinion that users would like to receive and gives the users reasonable assurance that the financial information is materially accurate. Our entire audit report can be found on page one of the ACFA. Next, we'll move over to a review of the communications to the board. At the conclusion of the audit, there's certain matters that we're required to communicate to the board. Including your agenda is our full required communications report. Here, I'm just going to hit on a couple of high-level highlights to that that's of more relevance to you all. First is the significant estimates we've identified are consistent with prior years being the useful lives of the principal assets and the proportionate share of the net pension -- thank you -- net pension liability and the net OPEB liability plans. We also had no difficulties to report, nor any uncorrected misstatements. And then also, within the appendix to the report that's included in your agenda, there's various representations that are made to us during the course of the audit about activities or transactions that occur. Those representations are generally pretty consistent year to year. Again, the full list is within that report if you'd like to review it, but nothing of significant change or of note there. Next, we'll move on to the financial highlights. We like to cover these highlights in graphical form because, as you can see on your report, you've got over 100 pages of financial information. You do have the full ACFA. If anyone had a chance to review it ahead of time and has specific questions, feel free to bring those up as we're going through this, but we'll kind of go slide by slide and summarize financial data for you. So the first slide here, and a little small for you guys to see, obviously, is showing governmental revenues for the past three years. So we'll break this down on the left-hand side, you'll see 2024, 23, and 22. In the green bar, that is state revenues. So obviously, as you can see, state revenues are the largest revenue source for the board. This funding increased $7 million compared to the prior year related to increases in the state public school fund program. County and other funding, which is represented by the gray bar, remain relatively consistent as compared to the prior year. Slight decrease of $385,000. Local county appropriations, which has included this in the general fund, increased by $2 million compared to the prior year. Again, if anyone has questions, feel free to stop me as I'm going. Federal funding, which is shown in the blue bar there, decreased slightly compared to the prior year. It's pretty consistent. One thing I like to make sure we mention, you can't see the total there, but the total of that blue bar is $43.6 million of revenue. Of that $43.6 million, 26.5 is related to ESER, Education Stabilization Funds. Everyone's been talking about it for years, that this is sunsetting away. You haven't really seen the effect of it yet. You guys probably had discussions and seen the effect of it this year as you're talking because we're in historical data, but always like to mention that. Before we move on, any questions on these revenue slides?
I just want to, Mr. Peryear, but you're saying that approximately $26 million of that 43 came from ESER. Would that hold true for '23 and for '22 school years as well?
Yes, yes. You're seeing, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you're substantially consistent amount of ESER, maybe a little bit higher. Andrew, feel free to chime in on me if I'm wrong there, but yeah, I mean, you're going to see a big, what you don't have is the 2020 and 21 data where you would have seen a big dip. So next year, you're going to see a dip, and you're going to really see this fall off pretty heavily.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sure. This next slide covers expenditures, and really, it's essentially a visual representation of where your monies are being spent each year. So you'll notice that the board spent around 73% on instructional services, with the remaining 27% being spent on other operational services. This breakdown between instructional and other is based on the MCDPI chart of accounts. You're seeing a slight dip in instructional this year. It's really driven by ESER spending on items that were classified as operational support, like capital outlay funds, so you're seeing a little bit of dip. Nothing overly significant, and you're above what we typically like to see is above a 70% threshold at some of our higher-performing districts, which obviously you're there. Absent, if you pull out, I did pull out the ESER items just to see, if you pull out ESER in comparative years, your instructional spend's pretty consistent year over year. Any questions there before we move on to fund balance, which is everyone's favorite?
One more question as far as this graph goes. You know, the past couple of years, we built a new school in Northwest Harney, a $30 million school or more. We also build a large addition to Dunn Elementary and New Wing, in addition to pretty much complete overhaul at Johnsonville, not to mention many other construction projects we've undertaken. Could that possibly help spike that as well?
Yes.
That 72% is opposed to higher amount?
Yes, we pull out as much capital outlay as we can, exclusively presented in Fund Four, but you're still, yes, you're still going to see some fluctuation there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sure. All right. So this next slide details fund balance for the prior three years for the General and Restricted Revenues Fund. So I'm going to kind of break this down bar by bar. So the green bar in the graph represents total fund balance across those two funds, which would be your Fund Two or Fund Eight, referred to otherwise. Total fund balance in these funds increased by $3.1 million when compared to the prior year. If you split that out in between your general and restricted revenue, general fund increased by $600,000 and restricted revenues fund increased by $2.5 million. If you slide one over, the gray bar represents the portion of total fund balance, which is considered available for appropriation. So that's effectively total fund balance less any items which are considered non-spendable, which is inventories, or any items that are restricted by the state, which would be any revenues. Your fund balance available for appropriation increased $2.3 million, which is effectively consistent with your increase in total fund balance. And then lastly, is the bar you see talked about a lot, is your unassigned fund balance in the general fund. Unassigned fund balance increased slightly by $711,000 when compared to the prior year. I'll flip one slide because this also talks about fund balance, but in a little bit of a different way. So this shows fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures. You're seeing an uptick, which is effectively consistent with the uptick you saw on the prior slide. But to make fund balance overly simplistic, we view fund balance as effectively your accumulated savings account. I mean, that's what it is in different terms, and so what we like to do is convert this into operating days as a metric to see what your, how long you could operate for. When converted into days, total fund balance represents approximately 25 days of operating expenditures, and unassigned represents approximately seven days. For any new members, that probably feels really low. I'm sure for Andrew, that feels really low. That's not inconsistent with any other district across the state. Norcal and LEAs operate on a very, very small fund balance, and it should be noted, there's no state mandated thresholds for fund balance at the LEA level. Pause there because typically, we always get a fund balance question, so. Setting a record here. That's fine with me. All right, we'll flip over to the compliance audit. So in connection with our audit, we're also required to assess internal controls and compliance. This is where we evaluate internal controls specific to financial reporting. That's what this yellow book report is, in compliance with laws and regulations. Thankfully, not much to talk about. There's no findings that we have to report as it relates to the yellow book internal control matters. And then next, we will flip to federal and state programs. So we conduct a compliance audit over federal and state programs, which are deemed to be major. Programs selected for audit vary year over years based on total spending amounts, how recently they were audited, and some other factors. But we noted two federal major programs that are required to be audited. That was Title I in the Education Stabilization Fund, otherwise known as ESER. Also had no reportable findings as we're little far testing in those programs. And then lastly, we had three state major programs that are required to be audited. You can see those listed here. We also had no findings. And I'll just mention again that the, as a testament to Andrew and his team, having no findings is not, it's not uncommon, but it's definitely not common across the state. There's many audits that we have where we have a litany of items to discuss on this list, so just again, a testament to your team and the guidance that Andrew delivers. Otherwise, that concludes my presentation. I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Other questions for Mr. Peryear? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Peryear, and also thank you to Mr. Cox and your staff for your hard work.
Absolutely.
Excellent audit. Yes, sir. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move that would go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1181, to prevent the disclosure of confidential student records under GS 115C 402.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. The chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gania aye.
Motion carries. We're now in closed session. Motion carries. We're now in closed session.
Following the motion and a second, we're now back into open session. And item number four, public comments, and we had no one sign up for that, so we'll move along to number, item number five, superintendent update, and Mr. Matthews.
Thank you Chairman Powell, members of the board. Just wanted to say that I hope all of you had a wonderful Christmas and New Year. I know it was much needed time for rest and recharging for, sorry, much needed time for rest and recharging for our teachers and staff. We are back and starting on second semester. Mr. Hare and I had the opportunity today to attend the School Board Association new member board training in Raleigh and plan to attend the second session tomorrow. I will also be attending the superintendent's executive leadership program as part of the North Carolina School Superintendent's Association support for new superintendents in Greensboro on Wednesday and Thursday, so this week is quite full. Ms. Tammy Johnson's already notified you, but I wanted to recognize Ms. Sharon Ms. Tammy Johnson's already notified you, but I wanted to recognize Ms. Sharon Gany, who will be the grand marshal for the Harriet County's Martin Luther King Day Parade on Monday. Congratulations, Ms. Gany, we appreciate you representing us in there. Also, Ms. Gany has a birthday coming up on the 28th, so happy birthday, Ms. Gany.
Thank you.
A big, big, big month for you. And finally, with January being designated as School Board Appreciation Month, Ms. Johnson also has a small appreciation gift for you over here behind your chair against the wall to thank you for your service to our district students and stakeholders, and thank you for all that you do. Mr. Chairman, unless you have some specific questions for me, that's all I have this evening.
Other additional questions for Mr. Matthews?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you. And congratulations, Ms. Gany and, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along to our next item is auxiliary services, and that's Mr. Pearson.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, just a couple of brief updates for you. We were notified shortly before Christmas break that we did receive state funding for SRO grant, which will continue to cover five elementary school SRO positions, is something we had had in the past and had to reapply and did get that continued funding, so certainly helps that to, for us to be able to staff SROs at every school. We are waiting on additional grant notice for some safety equipment, which will allow us to upgrade some radios, some access control, some other security layers if that grant does come through, so hopefully we'll hear about that soon. Beginning in the end of January and carrying through February, I'll begin holding safety meetings with each principal at their campus. We'll kind of review annually some of the plans, update some of the online things that we have to do for the state to stay in compliance, and also do some walkthroughs of their buildings to kind of talk about some additional layers of safety that they may want to, want to see. From the custodial front, Mr. McDowell wanted me to share that he has seen a very positive increase in applicants recently. Interviewed about seven folks last week, has some additional folks lined up, and applicant pool is much, much more stocked than he has seen it recently, so that was positive news that he definitely wanted to share. And then on the athletic front, the High School Athletic Association has released preliminary conferences. This is draft number one of new conference alignment, which will take effect for the next four years. It does look like Triton, Western Harriet, Harriet Central will probably remain in the same conference together. Overheals will likely be in a different conference, just based on size. Now there's eight classifications instead of four, so Overheals is going to be a couple of steps up from the other schools, but we do, do think that three of the four Harriet County schools will land in the same conference, which helps to continue some natural rivalries and, and helps reduce travel. So, we should get an additional draft number two here in a few weeks, and then a final draft should be set in February. That's all the updates I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Other questions for Mr. Pearson? One that I have regarding the new conferences, do they look, as far as like our travel standpoint, natural rivalries you mentioned, do they look pretty good as far as that's concerned? Is there something we may need to take a look at as far as appealing in your opinion?
So, it, it does look pretty good for our, what's going to be six A schools, what we would used to have known as three A, Triton, Western Harriet, and Harriet Central. They look, first draft had them plus Southern Lee, Lee County, and Union Pines, so pretty good conference there. Overheals was a, a gauntlet, Richmond, Purnell Sweat, Lumberton, so Overheals is, is putting in an appeal. It starts there at the school level with them trying to appeal to look at a different option. I think what we're waiting on is, is they've got to decide as the state, are they more concerned about travel or more concerned about the same size schools in a conference? And so, if they want to pull back on the travel a little bit, then Overheals may would, would come back this way, but they definitely have a tough draw right now.
Okay. Yeah, those are pretty long distance going to Rockingham and Laurinburg, those places, those pretty big conferences. Based on the drafts of, like the initial drafts of the conferences, is there like a, a more local one, like perhaps some of the larger Fayetteville schools we possibly could move into or?
Yep, and I think that's what they're looking to. You know, so ideally, you could take Pine Forest and Overheals, which are currently in a conference together, and try to group a few of those together, so that's, that's kind of what their proposal, or even coming back into a split conference where it's multiple size schools. So, yeah, that, that, I said, you, right now, they submit their feedback, then the next draft comes out, we see if we need to submit it again. Appeals process will carry out all the way through about March, and so I'll, I'll advocate on their behalf as well to make sure they try to get the best situation.
Because we're presently in a split three A, four A with a Harriet and Fayetteville schools primarily.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. That would be?
Five A?
Six, uh, seven A. Yeah, they're going, they're going all the way to eight A. Overheals is just on the cusp of being eight A, so they're, they'd be seven A, yeah.
That's going to take some adjustment because all our life has been one A through four A, so it's going to be some adjustment, eight A, okay? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving along now to curriculum and instruction, and Ms. Ferguson.
Good evening Chairman Powell and members of the board. December was a busy month, as you know, we had our EOC testing in all of our high schools. That went very well. Our testing department did a great job, and our schools did a great job, our school testing coordinators. Right now, we're in the middle of our MOY assessments. They're taking place with M-Class, I-Ready, and NC check-ins, so all of our schools K through eight are busy with middle, middle of the year assessments. I shared with you a new diploma endorsement in December about the fine arts. There's another diploma endorsement, it's the citizenship proficiency endorsement. It was added in January, December, it's been coming along, but they finalized it. We had to have it ready for our early graduates to offer it to them, which we did. But the students must pass a civics test developed by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and the test will include questions from the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service. It's their naturalization question test pool. So how that endorsement is set up, we have a link that takes us to those 100 questions. We are to develop a 10-question test from that. The test is given orally, they are to write their answers, it's not a multiple choice test, it's an open-ended response. We surveyed our civics teachers of the 100 questions and had them rank, rank them. We came up with 10 questions. We did offer it to our early graduates to earn that endorsement. They're not required to, but we did have some who took advantage of it, and we had a couple who passed it. You must get six out of 10 correct to get the endorsement. The math counts competition was held on December the 6th for our middle schools. Harriet Central Middle School was the winner, with Highland coming in second. We continue to have our monthly PLCs each month, this includes different groups, our coaches, our EL teachers, our EC teachers, and we offer after-school PLCs for our sixth through eighth math and ELA teachers each month as well. Coming back in January, we hit the ground running with PD. On January 6th, we had co-teaching PD, we had a high school math PD, elementary and middle school science professional development. We will offer high school science PD this Friday. We have partnered with the Science House out of NC State to provide the science PD. It aligns with our new standards, and then of course, Solution Tree for the math PD, and we received feedback on that, and it was overwhelmingly positive. The only suggestion we received, and we understand that the calendar keeps us pretty tight on our days, is please don't have PD, you know, that quick after coming from a break or the change of the semester, but as you know, we have very few days in our calendar to pick from. The topic for the math PD was unpacking the standards and student engagement. It was well received, and it was for our Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3 teachers. Our elementary and middle school math coaches held PD for our elementary and middle school teachers on fluency, and it was another one that was well received, so we were pleased with the PD this month. We are going to offer a local AIG endorsement so that our teachers will have the opportunity to add AIG to their licensure. We are working with Dr. Chris Godwin from Campbell University to provide this opportunity to our teachers. In our first cohort, we have 35 teachers who have signed up to work towards AIG licensure, and this is really exciting for us, as you know, with the turnover, we have a lower number of teachers who are AIG licensed, so this is a positive. We welcome to our new K-5 MTSS coordinator, Dr. Amy Madely. We know that she will do a great job and continue the work of our previous coordinator who retired in December. The CNI team has held our monthly instructional focus days to our principals, for our instructional coaches, and our assistant principals in all schools. Walkthroughs continue. I just wanted to update you from the state level, there's many changes in the CNI world. As I share with you, we have new science standards this year. We have to work on the alignment of honor level courses. Because of the storms in the western part of the state, they have extended that through December of 2025, but that'll be a lot of work on our teachers and our schools and our district people to audit every honors course and make sure it meets the rigor standards and that they're aligned. We have new standard course of study for world languages. We also will have new standards for K through 12 arts, music, visual arts, dance, and drama for the 25, 26 school year, and they are now working on ELA standards. So for those of you who are familiar with the way this rollout is, they usually stagger those, because of COVID, they've sort of played catch-up. So we are hitting a lot of new standards that we have to roll out to our teachers, K-12, all at one time. That's a lot of PD, a lot of resources, a lot of training. It's just a lot of work on the district level, but most importantly, it's going to be another task to put on principals and teachers, learning these standards and rolling them out. We have a plan in place, but just want you to be aware that all this is happening at one time, state is sort of playing catch-up. The upcoming events, we have our science fair January 30th and the Star Gym. It begins at 6:00 and the awards begin at 6:30, so we invite you out to that. I gave you some preliminary data at your seats, I won't go into detail with you, but I did want to share, the first one is our, our EOC scores, and I've shown you the scores for the fall of 2023, and it's the black and white one, and the fall of 2024. Now, we really can't compare these, because these are different cohorts of students, but we can, we do look for trends if we're moving in the right direction. We want to look for our proficiency to increase across the board, so that's what we're looking for, and we do see that in many areas. The schools can use this to look at projections and proficiency the state warns us about. We can't look for student growth, that's not what the projection does, but this is the data that we have. And also, you have to be aware that there could be the groups testing. For example, if you were to look at Western Harriet High School, if you look at their fall Math 1 for 2023 and their fall of 2024, you might say, oh my goodness, that's a huge decrease. No, that year, they still had a year-long foundations of Math 1 that most students were in, and the only group that tested in the fall of 2023 was one honors class. So that kind of information is needed when you look at it. And then I also wanted to share the NC check-ins with you. As I share with you, the purpose of NC check-ins is to drive instruction, is what the teachers are to use to decide which students may need help, which standards may need to be taught again, which standards they have not taught, but you can, we do use it to analyze and look at trends. For example, if you look at the green row for third grade math, when we look at our third grade math from the year before, these are two different groups of students, but what we can see is a positive trend of proficiency increasing from the year before, and that's definitely what we want. Now, if you take the third grade math 2023, 24, and compare it to the fourth grade math in blue, that could possibly be the very same group of children for, in most cases, so you can see a positive blue trend in looking for growth in those children. With our fifth grade, you could look at fourth grade from the year before, and I did the same thing at six through eight. Again, we don't compare this data, the state sort of asked us not to do that, for us to use it to drive instruction. We do share it with all the schools, because they like to look at it and have conversations, so I wanted to share it with you as well, to let you know that we are monitoring data and student progress. And those are my updates for tonight.
Other questions for Ms. Ferguson?
Ms. Gray, look ahead, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank the schools and the principals for the hard work that they're doing. We know this year, we rolled out our pacing guides and common formative assessments, and it's been a huge adjustment. We've received feedback on those, because we believe that teacher feedback is important. We believe in teacher autonomy, so we'll work this summer to make the needed and suggested adjustments, but we do believe like this is really helpful for our new teachers coming in, and even our master teachers with the quickly changing standards.
One other question I had was the, just to repeat, the science fair was at 6:00 on the 3rd, January 30th.
Yes, sir.
Did you say Overheals Elementary or?
Star Gym.
Star Gym, let me say.
And the awards start at 6:30.
Okay. Let me change that, Star Gym, okay, got you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have human resources, and Ms. Thompson.
Good evening Chairman Powell and members of the board. Some quick updates from HR, we have 26 base openings, classroom openings, but some of those are not actually vacant at the time, some of those are, there are still people in positions that are showing vacancies, I just want to be clear about that. We just have some of those. 19 EC and 34 classified, we're a little bit ahead in some areas that we were the previous years. Our fully hired sites are Star and the Harriet County Early College. We want to celebrate some accomplishments of our principals tonight, so just so you know that we completed two rounds of comprehensive, our schools have completed two rounds of comprehensive evaluations or observations, and so that's a total of 2,130 observations that should be completed by this time, and schools have completed 1,990 of those, and so we have a 93% completion rate, almost 94%, and I want to share with you, we have some sites that have done outstandingly well. 90 to 99% are Anderson Creek, Andrew, Coates Elementary, Dunn Elementary, Dunn Middle, Irwin, Harriet Central High School, Highland Elementary, North Harriet, Overheals Elementary, Overheals Middle, and Triton High School. And schools that had 100% are Ben Haven, Boone Trail, Coates Irwin, Coates Irwin Middle, the Harriet County Early College, Harriet Central Middle School, Highland Middle School, Johnsonville, Lafayette, Lillington, Shawtown, Northwest Harriet, and Star. So those schools deserve a real pat on the back. We've made great strides there, and we're really proud of the work the principals have done, stay up with that. And at the end of the day, what that really means for us, and we, it's been important to Mr. Matthews, as we've gone through this process, is that teachers are getting timely feedback on their practice, so that's the bigger accomplishment there. I'll with some other just general updates. I've, I've mentioned before, but we are deep into the work with EPI and Participate, I'm working on coming up with a hiring pool for the next school year. One thing that we will do, we have sites in our equity plan that are identified as having a higher number of inexperienced teachers, and so we always give that group of schools a head start on hiring from that, that teacher pool, international teacher, so we're working on that diligently. We're providing professional development opportunities for those international staff. We've customized their needs at both secondary and elementary levels, and our next PD sessions are scheduled for February. The first middle school and high school sessions will focus on classroom management, and the elementary will cover small group instruction. We are just about at 85% with our safe schools training, so we hope we can get that finished up here in the next few weeks. We have 10 classified employees scheduled to complete bus driver training by March 6th. Since July 1, 2024, we've had 24 classified employees complete training and obtain their bus license, but we've had 19 drivers to resign or retire, so we're just kind of slightly keeping our head above the, the, the number of retirees. But I do want to say that I want to commend our schools and our principals and, and assistant principals, this is hard work, you know, we started this work with bus drivers a, a few years ago, and I think our diligence here has, you know, everyone knows that if you work in Harriet County, it's a dual employment county, and that's very important. In the, in the community, I was at a public place recently, and I heard them discussing bus issues at others' counties, and someone said, but you know, in Harriet County, you do have to drive the bus, and I think that has been hard, it's been a hard stance to take, but I think our students have benefited from that, and I'm happy to say we're able to get them to school. We've made great strides over the last few years, so that work has been great from our transportation department. Our next bus class is scheduled for January 27th to the 31st at Gentry. We have 50 employees in the class, and the employees will work to complete this training process through the remainder of the school year, so we hope to have one more class, excuse me, in May. The R and R teams will host a virtual information session for alternative licensed teachers who are eligible for the North Carolina Teaching Fellows on 1:30. We will work with those in that group meeting, as well as in their individual licensure meetings in the next few weeks. And we plan to send out intent forms next week. We have other, that session on the, the Teaching Fellows is January 30th at 3:30, and we plan to host a Pearson prep session for our alternative licensed teachers, and we're continuing to work with our national board cohort and our mentor work with our national board cohort and our mentor cohort over the next few weeks. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Are there questions for Ms. Thompson? Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Next, we have student services update and Mr. White.
Chairman Powell and members of the board, inside of your board package, you will find the Star Academy report and the district release reassignment report. Two updates from student services. The first, winter graduation. Harnett County Schools hosted our first mid-year graduation ceremony on Thursday, January the 9th, 2025, at Triton High School. Over 80 students from Triton, Harnett Central High School, Over Hills High School, Western Harnett High School, the Harnett Virtual Academy, and Star Academy graduated that evening. A special thanks to Principal Marshall Jones and his staff for hosting this event, and Mrs. Ann Fennell for her outstanding work in putting the ceremony together. So it was a great time. We were actually almost at capacity there at Triton, and so if the numbers keep growing, it's our hope that maybe we can kind of nudge Campbell a little bit to do a winter graduation at Campbell next year. A quick update regarding our yonder pouches. In our last meeting, we discussed the distribution of yonder pouches at Western Harnett High School, Highland Middle School, and Star Academy. Letters were sent home to parents on January the 7th, and the schools will begin their process of implementation during the first week in February. Just some quick updates and things that we're hearing regarding these pouches for clarification purposes for the public and as well as our schools. Yonder does have pouches for students with documented medical conditions where a device can be accessed immediately if needed. And so there is a pouch that is designed for students who have documented medical conditions that they can carry, and if they have something that they need to utilize a device for, they can get into that device fairly quickly. And so we have cleared that with the organization, and they will provide us those types of pouches for those students. If a student does not have a cell phone, we're putting a process in place to make sure that those students are documented accordingly. So if a parent talks to us and says, hey, my child doesn't have a cell phone, doesn't have access to it, what we've asked the schools to do is to document those students as we go through the pilot, just so we can make sure that we're tracking those as we should, and then not charge a parent for a pouch that doesn't need to be charged for a pouch in case something gets lost or whatever. And then the third thing for our principals, they've been asked to continue to communicate with parents regarding what will happen in the case of an emergency. I think that's been the number one thing for a lot of our parents, is how we're going to respond in case of an emergency while we don't, while we hope we don't have one. I've asked the principals to continue to reiterate our policies, to kind of put our parents at ease regarding their child, them being communicated to in the case something does happen at the school. And so we're working through those things. We're still in the phase of talking to staff and making sure everybody's on one accord with those. They actually tried to deliver those devices over the holidays, but nobody was at the school, so they kind of sent them back. So they're sending them back to us, and we should have them in our possession now to be able to go through our process to get ready for the first week in February implementation. Other than that, this concludes my student support services report for the evening, unless there are any questions.
Mr. White, I just want to say thank you for your hard work and everyone's hard work for the graduation we had. It was, it was a great night.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Are there other questions for Mr. White? Thank you, Mr. White. Okay, moving along, we have our financial services report, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. Before I get started on the update, I do want to thank the finance team for the work this past year to allow us to have a clean audit, as you heard that Mr. Pergier presented to you earlier this evening. So thank you to the finance staff for that. Here are a few things that we have going on in finance for the month of January. As you know, it's time for W-2s to go out, so our team's working on that for our employees, preparing those and getting those ready to send out. Our goal is to have those out no later than January 24th. Same thing for 1099s for our contract vendors, our goal is to have those out by the 27th. Our payroll team's working hard to get 2025 IRS tax tables loaded into the system for our January payroll processing. We're also validating the Affordable Care Act reporting, so our 1095 forms have to go out to employees to get sent out on time as well. I'll also make a note there that President Biden signed a bill just before Christmas that no longer requires these forms to be mailed out to employees, to all employees, but rather makes it, we have to make them available to the employees upon request. But the state health plan or the folks who work on our ACA this year said we still need to go forward with sending them all out for this year. And I'll just make a note that that process and sending all those out is a roughly cost of about $30,000 that we send on sending those 1095 forms out. And then there are a few other end-of-year processes that work along, that goes along with taxes and IRS requirements. There are several different bonuses that are to be paid in January. They're based on scores, primarily on scores from the 2023, 2024 school year. One of those is third grade reading bonus. Components are different, but the first one is, we have teachers that are top 25% in the state and top 25% local scores, and we have nine of those which will receive a bonus of $6,751. And then we have seven who are top 25 for local scores, which receive a bonus of $3,500. Another bonus is the fourth and fifth grade reading bonus itself. Top 25% state and top 25% local together is 17, receive a bonus of $4,000. And then we have 10 who are top 25% local only, receive a bonus of $2,000. Another bonus is the fourth through eighth grade math. For those teachers that qualify for the top 25% state and local, there are 34 of those in the district, that's a $4,000 bonus. We had three that were top 25% state only, which is 2,000, and we had nine that were top 25% local only for another 2,000 bonus for them. For AP exams, those who had, students who took AP exams, they get $50 per score over three or three or above. We have 32 teachers receiving a bonus for that, and those bonuses range from $250 to $3,500. For CTE credentials, depending on how the state ranks that credential, it's either $25 or credential, or $50 a credential. We have 20 folks, 20 CTE teachers receiving the bonus, and they range from $75 to $3,500 as well. So those are the bonuses that we have coming up. Something that impacts you as the board, recently we received notification that changes in legislation, now make it allowable for board members to contribute to the state 401K program if you choose to. So I wanted to let you know that, and if anybody has any interest in that, you certainly reach out to me, and we can talk further about that if you have any desire for that. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Are there questions for Mr. Cox?
I'd like to give a personal thank you, Mr. Cox, to you and your staff for the tremendous work you've done. Thank you so much, and pass it on to your employees.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick question, the transition from Blue Cross to Aetna, has that been okay from what you understand?
We haven't heard any issues with the transition at this point.
Okay. Still early.
Right, it is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox. Okay, we have no discussion items, so move along to number 12, consent agenda items. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Ganey aye.
Motion carries. Moving along to item number 13, action items, and A, review and consider approval of print shop lease and service contract. And back to you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. What this is, is the pros that you have in the packet is replacing our print shop equipment and service agreement for the machines there at the print shop. The lease, current lease expires at the end of June. The proposal we have is with Novitec for Sharp machines to replace the current Xerox machines, and we're using the Qualus Purchasing Cooperative to meet our requirements for bidding. The service agreement is essentially the same as we have with Xerox. What I mean by that is the per print cost is roughly the same as what it is for the current one. But Novitec will buy out our remaining six months of our current agreement, and we'll be saving roughly $20,000 per year on the equipment lease. So over the five-year lease, the savings is about $100,000. I've worked with Carolina Business Equipment, who Novitec recently bought out in a previous district and been pleased with the service they provided. We're presenting this to you pending signature by Novitec. We have a verbal agreement with them as to not delay the implementation so we can get it done in January, and recommend your approval for the lease and service agreements. I'd have to take any questions.
Now, savings of $100,000, that's pretty significant. Is this comparable equipment?
Is comparable or better?
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Ganey aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item B, review and consider approval of purchase from Apple. Ms. Ferguson.
Yes, sir, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Mace. This falls under the DOD grant that he helped write and received.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Powell, members of the board. Harnett County Schools was awarded the DOD Education Activity Grant of 1.5 million in the fall. The grant aims to improve academic performance in math and science in the military-connected middle and high schools over the next five years. Those would be Highland Middle, Over Hills Middle, Western Harnett Middle, Over Hills High School, and Western High School. The first year is a planning year, and it's used for ordering materials, planning, professional development, and hiring staff. And so this evening, we request approval to purchase iPads and associate products so we will have all the equipment needed, so that when the school year starts next year, we'll have this in place. And that's what the, this purchase is that you see under this item, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions for Mr. Mace or further discussion?
Covered by the grant.
Yes, it was specified in the grant, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Ganey aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mace.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Okay. Next, we have item C, review and consider approval of get ready from Vista Higher Learning, and this says, Ms. Ferguson, but Mr. Mace is still here, so I'm assuming we're back to you.
Yes, sir, this is for English language learners, so we'll let Mr. Mace give you the information on it.
Thank you, ma'am. The second approval we request is purchasing in-hand textbooks and online access for our ESL students in our middle and high schools. The order includes textbooks, workbooks, leveled reading kits, and also online access. Over the past two and a half years, our ESL program numbers have increased by almost 500 students in Harnett County Schools. To meet the academic needs of our ML students, we need to provide our middle and high school ESL teachers with a curriculum that focuses on acquisition of English, and we requested approval to purchase the Vista Learning for our middle and high schools.
Now, have we been using this program already?
No, sir.
Is this a new program?
It's a new program. We reached out to other school systems, find out what they were using. This was one that was recommended, and then we had them come in, gave myself, my leads, a presentation, and then we shared it with the middle school and high school ESL teachers to get their input on it.
Okay.
Is there a grant, any kind of grant that will take care of this, or is it general?
It's general because the grant that we get for ESL would not cover this at all.
This comes out of our textbook funding.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And this was, I guess, I don't want to say approved, but our ESL teachers, they liked it?
Yes, sir. We had, they did, yes, sir.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Ganey aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mace.
Thank you, sir.
And now, item D, review and consider approval of K-5 Summer Fair, Summer, I'm sorry, Summer Book Fair requisition, and that's Ms. Ferguson and Ms. Stevens.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Powell and members of the board. I bring to you the 2025 Title I K-5 Summer Book Fair purchase and proposal. This is a district-wide initiative that's reflected in our approved federal programs consolidated grant, so I'm bringing it to you because the cost exceeds the threshold since I'm purchasing for all 16 schools, and I'm just here to seek your approval. If you have questions, I have outlined the description in the, on the PO3 form, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. There's a significant difference once in and of cost here, or, and I'm assuming, I know we've worked with Scholastic, we have worked with Book Source.
Yes, and Book Source, this would be the third year we've implemented with Book Source. Book Source does a phenomenal job of implementing, but they put, they put a lot of sweat equity in it, and Scholastic offers a huge amount of bells and whistles that are phenomenal, but we just can't get as many books for students, in the hands of students. And the quality of the books, I think, are comparable, so that's, I'm not willing to compromise on that, but I feel like Book Source has really delivered for the past two years.
That was my next question, were they comparable or so forth?
Yes, the books are. It's not as fancy how the kids get to select, but it's still an online self-select that they can do via a Google form, rather than like a fancy Scholastic platform.
Got you. Okay. So, motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
I have just one thing. When I was preparing for tonight and reviewing, I got some heartburn whenever I saw the prices. You know, and I had reached out to Ms. Ferguson for some clarification, and she said, Brian, calm down, it's federal grant funding, I'm perfect. So, thank you very much.
It is an outreach that our parents and our students really love. We've done it for about 10 years now, and it is written in the grant, and is funded by the federal grant, so we're fortunate that you approve it each year, and they do appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So further discussion. Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Ganey aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Okay. Okay, moving along to item E, review and consider termination of contract with Performance Services Incorporated. Mr. Pearson.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, kind of a unique situation here, we're asking you guys to terminate the contract. As you know, we are working on building a child nutrition cooler freezer, estimated cost of around $4 million. We had plans, and part of our design there was to use some child nutrition funds for about 50% of that. Child nutrition funds are federally connected funds, and there's a lot of rules and a lot of pieces we must follow to do that. And so we were told that by going through the designed bill process, as we were on this, was going to make it almost impossible to use those funds. So sought legal advice, and legal advice is to pause and to terminate this contract to simply then restart the process, not in a designed bill, but in a traditional get bids and go with lowest bids, and then we can hopefully implement the use of these child nutrition funds to offset about 50% of this cost. No reflection of the company's performance, simply trying to meet, you know, a unique financial situation we feel like will be more beneficial to us to pause at this time and kind of restart the bidding of that project. Certainly, entertain any questions you do have.
So if we're tall, as we're talking about, maybe getting the federal money, half of it at least.
Correct. We would explore to make sure that we'd get a yes on using approximately $2 million of the child nutrition money, whereas previously, right before Christmas break, we got a no on using that money.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve for discussion purposes.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Ganey aye.
The motion is approved. Okay. Item F is, let's see, review and consider approval of the 25, 26 school calendar options based on the survey results. Mr. Pearson?
Yes, and Ms. Bird is pulling up the survey results for you there. Overwhelmingly, both the community and the staff were in favor of option two. Overwhelmingly, both the community and the staff were in favor of option two. Approximately 71%, almost 72% of respondents were in favor of option two, so a little different than we've seen in some other years where it's kind of neck and neck. A few less votes than we've had in previous years, yet still around 1,600 votes there. And again, option two was the calendar option where spring break was after Easter. Really that and some nuances in where workday falls were the two biggest differences in the calendars, but community response from staff and families was option two is their preference. Certainly both options on the table there for you guys to discuss and choose which to approve for the 25, 26 school year.
And just to refresh, going back, looking at the calendar, that would still include having Good Friday as a holiday, correct?
That is correct.
And then we have the following week will be the vacation.
That is correct, yes, sir. And both calendars, students start school on a Wednesday. That was the overwhelming consensus of the calendar committee that they wanted that. So both calendars are very similar in that structure, other than spring break.
Okay.
Does Chairman make a motion to approve option two of the 25, 26 calendar school year?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Thank you for your work on it.
Okay, the chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gany aye.
Motion carries. Okay, one second here. Okay, now we've got item G, action item G, the attorney contract. Okay, attorney contract, Dan. Mr. Duke?
It's presented to the board. This is the contract for legal services for Stewart and Duke, P L L C. It is the contract that was vetted previously for legal services. It is identical, except that the entity that was providing legal services is no longer in existence, and so this is the newly formed Stewart and Duke, P L L C. It would be Bernard Stewart and myself, and it's for the board's approval. So the contract terms are the same, nothing's changed there.
Are there questions for Mr. Duke? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve. A second. Is there further discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gany aye.
Motion carries. Then, action item 13H is a letter to, a legislative letter. Mr. Abate.
Ms. Gany, members of the board, there is a group of school board members across the state of North Carolina who are presenting this letter to their school boards for their consideration to send to our legislature. So far, the counties that are signed on to it and have forwarded it to the legislature are Granville, Lee, Onslow, Catawba, Craven, Wake, and New Hanover. And for the record, I'll read it into the record, and should you all pass it, we'll each sign it and forward it to Senator Phil Berger and Representative Destin Hall. The letter reads, Dear Senator Berger and Speaker Hall, we, the members of the Harlan County Board of Education, are writing to urgently request that you take action to address the critical issue of teacher pay in North Carolina. Specifically, we advocate for a minimum-based salary of $50,000 for beginning teachers. As you are well aware, inflation has significantly impacted both our state and nation over the past year. North Carolina Commerce Department reports that the state's median personal consumption expenditure, its inflation rate, has reached approximately 3.8%. This inflationary pressure has been widely discussed in the media and reflected in statements from various members of the General Assembly. Unfortunately, during the recently concluded short session of North Carolina General Assembly, no adjustments were made to the education budget provisions from the 2023 biennial budget, which was session law 2023-134. This decision means that while the state has provided a 3% raise for certified and non-certified staff, the increase falls short of keeping pace with inflation. In real terms, this results in a reduction in pay for many of our teachers, who are already working tirelessly to support the approximately 1.4 million students across our state. Teachers are the backbone of our education system, and it is unjust for them to face what amounts to pay cuts due to circumstances beyond their control. As the cost of living continues to rise, our educators should not be asked to bear the brunt of economic challenges. That's why the Harlan County Board of Education joins with other boards of education across North Carolina in calling for a pay increase for both certified and non-certified staff of at least 5% with a minimum starting salary of $50,000 for new teachers. Our teachers, staff, and students deserve more. By raising teacher pay to a level that truly reflects the hard work and dedication of those who shape the future of North Carolina's children, we invest in the long-term success of our schools, communities, and state. We implore you to take swift and decisive action at upcoming legislative session to provide the necessary pay increases our educators deserve. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter. We are confident that with your leadership, we can ensure that North Carolina's teachers receive the compensation they have earned. Sincerely, each of the board members and Superintendent Matthews. And it's just a letter that, like I said, school boards across the state are coming together as groups of local school boards requesting our legislature to increase funding for our teachers.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, and we sign this and send it to him, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? And for the record, this will be our recommendation from Harlan County Schools that we adopt a minimum, that the state legislature, rather, adopt a minimum $50,000 starting salary for beginning teachers, and at least a 5%, hopefully more, but a 5% pay increase for all certified and non-certified staff.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chairman votes aye?
Abate aye.
Gany aye.
Motion carries, and Mr. Matthews and Ms. Johnson, if y'all take care of, making sure this is sent to the Senator Berger, Senator Protem Berger, and Speaker Hall. And any other, probably should we, possibly send our local delegation as well? Senator Bergen and Representatives Penny and Pike?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you do that as well.
And if you all just sign one of those copies before, just a moment.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A1A3 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under G S 115C 321, to consider the matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee, and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gany aye.
We're now in closed session. After a motion and a second, we have returned to open session. Is there any additional business before the board this night? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.